About one a day for a while.
But it would be nice to say that you can.
Deleted some from Elaine too.
And it's like, um, the Mars.
Just like the ones from that? Are you getting those down?
Forty some buses come so now, you come through their alleys and just see their public.
Jerry's seen them? We're still in different places. Said something about Mars. Looked like.
Oh, yeah.
I heard they sent entry there.
Yeah.
Picking up some, oh, I found some furniture on one of them.
Yeah, one of the, what site is she at? Marygold?
She's on twenty-five minutes.
Oh, okay, 'cause Marygold, I know the people that run that. Okay, so they'll shop with the teaks and redo.
Oh, this is, this is a private.
Oh, it was, oh.
Call a meeting to order Monday, August twentieth. Find its officer, three two local.
Kane?
Here.
Delaine?
Here.
Erickson? Boone?
Here.
Shaw?
Here.
Swiggen?
Here.
And Anderson?
Here.
Are there any changes to the agenda? That's sent out last Friday. No changes, have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Kane moves to adopt the agenda.
Shaw second. Motion's been made by Kane, seconded by Shaw to approve the, to adopt the agenda, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Uh, minutes were also sent out on Friday afternoon, uh, for the August sixth meeting.
Swiggen, Mike Rajan to approve minutes from August sixth meeting.
Boone, sir. Motion's been made by Swiggen, made by Boone, to approve the August sixth, two thousand eighteen minutes, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, no public hearings, uh, visitors could be heard, uh, miss Pat McHill.
Okay, I'm not hearing the official capacity because I have none, but I'm, I'm a volunteer. And, um, one thing about Biersford is so many good things happening and after something happens, people will say, when was it? Where was it? How was the turnout? Um, and so, I'm looking and I, when I moved back home three summers ago in July, what I'm seeing, coming back home, is we're in great tents. Lot of good things happening in tents. The arts, education, the lions, the nonprofits, the churches, and in those tents, I think, could go under an umbrella. Everything Biersford. So, everything that's happening goes and we redo that paradigm of where do they shift? How many of us look at our phone the first thing in the morning? Most of us do. Most of us are addicted to the being and the change, of what's coming across. And so, when I was working with the school now on the legacy project, I'm seeing where their main directive news operation is not the Biersford Republic. That's the last piece, that's the last area. And more and more people are going to Channel Eight and also their own individual sites. So, I put a committee together, we met last Friday, Nathan was there, Elaine was there along with Jerry, and talked about the possibilities of creating. I had called it the one place. Now we've just changed it and we wanna call it Everything Biersford, Everything Biersford. People then would be able to drive to that site and find out things that are going on. Could that site be self-sufficient? Well, I would love it to be self-sufficient. In fact, there are two people meeting on Wednesday that I hope they will say, we'll form a little company and do this. I don't know. They'll talk Wednesday, I'll talk to them Thursday morning. That is a possibility. Where the Chamber, I've been helping them redo, and we're looking at what we, I've called a positive triangle. One part of the triangle is promotions. Those are the people that need to ring the chills in this community, to make a living, to make a profit, to stay alive. And just not survive, but thrive. The other part of the triangle is what's called Shine. We have our first Shine meeting on September seventh at seven o'clock at Bridges. Shine stands for Small Business, Home Business, Internet Business, Network Business, and Entrepreneurs. It's going to be a one-hour meeting, once a month, probably the first Friday, and it will be led, we're gonna be starting out, kicking it off with two people. Mike Limer and Shandee, if I'm pronouncing his last name correctly. They will bring personal and professional development to our business people. The foundation of a triangle is what's going to be called celebration. And it's going to be a summer celebration, not on cement, hopefully, but on grass, in the park, in the pool, in the stadium. Egg games, run games, old-fashioned games, try to create a summer celebration that doesn't cost families money. That can come and enjoy each other, based on our culture, I think, in this community. So, that's the positive triangle. So, it's gonna work mainly about eighty percent in committee. So, if I own a business on Main or what I call our miniMain streets, I will come to the promotions meeting because I wanna see things happen. Someone that wants personal and professional development and collaborating, it used to be when we went, I was at the Lakes, we used to say, we're either gonna collaborate or evaporate. We're either gonna work together or it ain't gonna happen. And what I've learned in coming back home are four words, work with the willing. And the excitement that these two people had about this creation Friday, we're gonna talk more this week, Wednesday and Thursday. So, that's Everything Biersford, that's the website. So, what I'm here for tonight is some seed money. Okay, so, if we get some money to get this started, and these two individuals say, you know what, Pat, we wanna create it so it's self-sufficient, they would pay you back. If not, I, I don't know how we're gonna get it started right now, as far as some money to get it going. Um, any questions?
I think we just, uh, what we're looking at is a website here, it would be something that'd be kind of away from what the city is trying to do. We get bombarded, why can't we have this on the city website, why can't we have this on the city website?
Yeah.
What Pat's, and, and that group talked about was, we need something where anyone can send something to, and maybe do some advertising on there. Uh, and then the advertising would continue to help pay for the ongoing cost of that.
Yes.
The city's not the one that keeps saying, why don't you update your website, you know, I want, there was nothing updated on this or this. That's what we're, that's what they're trying to get at here, is trying to do some of those things that the city doesn't have time to do at all, all the time, so.
Well, and also the idea that Chamber is all volunteer. And, you know, Rob's serving president right now, he does not have time to do those updates, even though he's social media savvy. So, if we were to try to sell ads and banner ads, the Chamber would still operate over here, have membership and promotions in which they could bring that to the caucus. This would be a separate identity, but it would be adding value to every organization in the community. And if it became like Del Rapids, they have three thousand six hundred population. I called the director this morning, he didn't get back to me today, but they have a website, which Jerry knows the folks, and, um, it's two young men. It started Big Sioux Media dot com. They sell promos, that's how they make a living. It's a possibility. The Chamber then would still have their memberships and then dividing into that triangle. So, what I'm here tonight is just to ask you for some funding to get it started, and we'll see where it goes from there.
So, we're looking at the website first, is that?
Is, right, Everything Biersford.
We gotta tell them that, that they're just willing to do that for us. And, uh, what did she say, a cost of?
Three thousand.
Three thousand dollars.
Um, right now, how many know Logan Simmons? Logan Simmons is twenty years old, and he's the Director of Media for the company Dakota Resources, the Chinese man, Bill. Okay, he's, he's the, um, the media director. He's twenty years old, and he's one of the brightest young men I've ever visited with. And he, he was excited about this, and he will be meeting with Teresa on Wednesday. So, we'll see where that meeting goes from there. Um, I, I just have a handout, 'cause that's the teacher in me, but, um, I wanted to also report that I just said, I wrote, Everything Biersford will be an active viable site to promote all things Biersford, from sales at ribs at Fiesta, to the candles at Irish Twin Soap Company, to what's happening at Subway and Lewis Drug, along with a donut and coffee to go from Casey's, going to Birch's getting a gallon of paint, going to Ace and Friday Lunch at Dark Horse. All of those things happening. People then, paradigm shift, go to where everything's happening. And when people change habits, it takes anywhere from twenty-one to ninety days. Um, I also shared at that meeting on Friday, that I think it's more important for Biersford to thrive than to grow. If we thrive, it'll grow. Thriving, not just surviving, in this community. Jo Sackism is economic director of Dool County. She has a business called BackroadsToday dot com. Uh, she came and took close to seventy pictures of the Biersford community with me on Thursday. She's gonna be putting together a promo on her site that has about a hundred thousand hits. Um, the city or the Chamber of Commerce is, is paying, uh, for that to, to happen. Some other thoughts that I wrote down, um, our growing student population, we're now at seven hundred students. Seventy-five students are open enrollment. Do you know how wonderful that is for a town this size, open enrollment? We've got kids coming from Canton this year, we've got students coming from Sioux Falls, Washington, from Fairview. Why? Because we've got an excellent school. And when the realtors are talking to people about moving to Biersford, one of the main things is schools. We have fifty-eight thousand millennials in the city of Sioux Falls, that are from Gregory and Salem and Hurley and all the small rural communities, that would love to move to a community like this. And you know we just need housing.
So, Pat, when do you think you'll find out the website, who is gonna run that?
Thursday at ten o'clock.
Okay. Now, correctly from what, that might make a difference in what we can, should and shouldn't do, right?
Yeah, if, you know, in fact, if.
If they're gonna run it as a, for profit, I don't know if the city could, um.
No, that's what I'm saying, is, that, that's why I'm bringing this up, is because the more I thought about it since I'm meeting Nathan, it can't be a volunteer to make this work. You, you know yourself, if you're, even if you're in business for yourself, how much media time you spend in connecting with people. I was doing the most of the day. So, um, but you know, it, maybe it's just to inform you tonight, and revisit, and we talk, and we come back to the next meeting after we dug a little further. The more I thought about it, that I.
That's a good idea, I mean, 'cause I think, I think the idea of, of the website, bringing things together, removing them from the city's website, where it's not necessarily part of the city's role, is a good idea, so.
Yeah.
Pat, the, uh, the businesses, so, okay, let's say Fiesta decides they wanna put something on Everything Biersford, is there a fee?
Well, if we go to a private company, yes. A banner, you know, in, um, Del Rapids, those people are paying anywhere from three hundred to five hundred dollars for a banner up for a month. And it could be a nice small business for someone.
So, to make it successful advertising, we gotta have people accessing it, in other words, everything has to be there.
Yes, yes. And, and, and Steve, it's more than a volunteer job, it's, it's a company.
Oh, absolutely, that's, yeah.
And that's what Big Sioux Media did in Del Rapids, and have been very successful. So, maybe between this and maybe when I come back, you might have looked at Big Sioux Media, Everything Del Rapids. And they do have a paid Chamber executive, which, which makes a difference. Um, some other thoughts are, um, I just truly believe that rural America is changing, that we're no longer flyover country, that people love our core values, our fresh water and our air. We are now the third growing, largest state in America. We're behind Utah and Washington, third largest, fastest growing state. Guess where people wanna retire, in South Dakota, it's the number one state. We've been, you've been called the number one community. Those are things that we've got to start promoting. It goes to our next talk, and that was the interstate signage. And as we were saying, when you drive by, you've got four to six seconds to see a sign. And like Nathan said at our meeting the other morning, we need one thing, I wanted four slices, pool, downtown, school, bridges. Four slices, come, stay, play, visit, whatever, where do we go? Come be Biersford, just short. One, one picture. And what would be one picture we should put on that sign? Going east or south, north and south. We advertise Hayward and Iowa. And the whole May Guy and Emily's, I'm sorry. But we need a more positive image out on the interstate when we've got thousands of cars going back and forth. On Sturgis Rally, I sat out and watched people coming to town one afternoon, and I was amazed. And how many people stopped there, but then where do they go? How do we get them downtown? How do we get them to know Biersford? Um, another thing I've been working on, and I want to thank the high school principal, Dustin Dayton came with me last Friday. We, we hopefully saved the nutrition site, worked that out, worked on numbers, how we can keep people coming there to have dinner. And the high school is gonna help us in the student council. So, we can continue to build those numbers. Uh, another thing is on the, um, rethinking the value to the Chamber. Uh, you know, we're, they're gonna have to prove themselves, and hopefully they can, and there's a lot of energy there, I'm just an unpaid advisor. Um, the Watchdog Legacy Project, we're excited about the upcoming election, the bond on the second of October. We now are releasing seats for sale at a thousand dollars apiece. I've put the information on, how many look at, if you grew up in Biersford, that website? It's interest, it's interesting the hits we're getting on the Grace Kennedy, um, Center for Performing Arts. If some of you remember Mark Ostis, Mark is a retired bishop of the Emmanuel Lutheran Church, and he wrote today, underneath my post, Grace Kennedy taught me so much about music, I use what she taught me every day. And I think there are thousands of students who feel that way. So, we're excited about the heartstrings there. Uh, Homecoming Day, there's gonna be two parades, and I think we need to put our, our best foot out. Uh, the parades of nineteen bands at Capital State University in the morning, and the afternoon, the Homecoming Parade, and of course, the Ball Game. So, that's what I have, and I just have a handout for each of you. Take it what you want, or not.
Pat, just a quick question.
Yeah.
The people you're going to attract with this website are probably forty years old and younger, how do you, how do you propose to involve those that are forty to seventy?
Yeah, we still have a, um, you know, a presence in the Republic, in, in, in getting that done and getting that out. And, uh, we are having another public meeting in the old gym. We're gonna try to have, I've been working with the Southeast Co-op on Education Day for the small rural schools. Oh, you can share with us. I can't. And, uh, one of the things is, um.
But you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, 'cause Al's, you know, they had four public meetings, and that worked.
If you talk to some of the people that go to, to senior companion meals at noon, they access Channel Eight maybe, but they don't access the website.
And, and that, that's another point, thank you, Steve. But yesterday at the breakfast for the Boy Scouts and the BMW, the pancake breakfast, I sat with people that were in their eighties and nineties. Those are the people that go to those, and you, it was amazing, the questions they had. And he said, who is this new mayor? Tell me about him. And I said, you know what we're gonna do, is we need to have an open house for the new mayor. And whether the Chamber and the City Council do it together, and this is the same time, it depends on, on Jim, but a thank you to Jim and a welcome to, to Nathan. And, and I think if that could collaborate, it would say something about where you are in leadership. And it's just a suggestion, I'd be willing to help anyone that wants to put that together, the Chamber would help, maybe co-sponsor. Share the expenses, Little Bites, the back of Birch's. And if anybody's a Democrat, I am sponsoring Michelle, Michelle, my public announcement, uh, Michelle Laberby is dynamite. And what she has to say about collaboration and leadership, um, oh, gosh, what's the gal's name, Secretary Treasure, or Secretary, Michelle Krabs, her husband? Mitch, who used to be Communications Director for Ron. He, uh, anyway, he wrote me and he said, Pat, she's one of the most outstanding leaders I've ever worked with. And I think that says a lot, so, um, if you know anybody that's, um, you know, I knew in the Iowa caucus, I knew my people, but not here. Democrats hide. So, Monday night, twenty-seventh, that's it.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll, I'll, I'll just get back to you and see where we're going.
Okay.
Would there be a possibility of some help if it goes just a blink and not private?
I think, that's up to you guys, they would carry some contingency funds and they have the discretion to use that where they choose throughout the year.
Throughout the year, okay, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, next up, Department has it for us, Jeff Hyrden.
I don't fucking match that up, is the island. So, I had to talk to Jared, we're having, there's surplus stuff to handle the option. Um, we've got all these signs from the Sign Project that got repozed last year. And, uh, so I gotta count on those, I'm guessing on the weight, and if they just go to scrap, you know, it's a little over a hundred dollars for these signs. Um, that's just, there were people that have, there's people that have asked if they're for sale, um, the street signs, um, they'll probably be, um, one of the first that probably go. Uh, but if people want stop signs for their, in their garage or their man cave or whatever, um, but, uh, I said I volunteered for a few hours on Saturday, sit down at the shop, that's where they're all at, in the garage, um, and.
You may wanna do some checking, 'cause I think it's illegal in South Dakota to possess a road sign.
Well.
I'm just throwing that out.
You know, if they, if, so if they come in, I don't wanna pass on a bill of sale, everybody buys them, but if they got the name on there, on this list, Pat, and maybe we gotta do some checking on that anyway, stop signs, maybe that's something, but the street signs, I don't know, but, you know, maybe, maybe it doesn't work, but I just said I volunteered time. And if we got ten or five or ten or fifteen dollars for signs, you know, that'd go a long ways, and, and when it doesn't sell, we can take for the, the surplus and support.
Do they even sell, I don't know, I don't know. Tom, do you know anything about them?
I don't know that. I can try to find out.
Well, coming from you, try, you know, does that?
Yeah, it's actually a class one misdemeanor, position road sign.
For, does that apply to all signs then?
You know, it says road signs, you know, and what it's meant for is for kids to take them down.
Yeah.
But I don't think they differentiate between some that are sold through the city, or some that are stolen, I mean, it doesn't say that in the law.
Well, everything now is the high reflectivity, um, we don't have anything, this, these are all construction grade. Um, I know the state signs, when I looked up there, they've all got, states got their sticker on the back, um, you know, but.
Think maybe something needed to look into, maybe they're checked first.
Who wouldn't know, who would be a good person to call?
I don't know.
I think if it's legal, Jeff, it's a great idea, I think you could sell the heck out of it.
Yeah, I think so too. Yeah, if it's legal, I.
If it's legal, I say go for it, in fact, put a table up down here.
Rummage sale.
Yeah, you'll get it, you can sell them, I guarantee.
Signs are popular, they worth a lot of money, so.
If it's legal.
Yeah. Better off than that first.
All right, please, I've got one question, I know we've been, uh, the date was for coming once, with the water tower, I don't know.
Still waiting for the AG opinion. I emailed last week and didn't hear anything back, he's out, he was out last week, and didn't hear back today from.
Is this, is this pretty normal for taking us on to get a reply, or?
Um, they don't guarantee any time back, so. It's gotta go through a bunch of channels, and I don't already have time to do much, so I can drop this, but you.
Well, that's all that I have, does anybody else have a question, or?
Oh, Jeff, does anyone have any questions about your list of surplus items there? And if you have any questions, it'd rather have you ask Jeff what he's thinking there, or, obviously, it must be items that you don't, no longer use or haven't used for quite some time.
Yeah, yeah. Some of them don't work, and, you know, so.
Although, these will all be, tomorrow morning I'll give, uh, Sioux Falls a list of these, but it's, it's down there where they're put, Jeff is at the top here, and I don't know, you wanna stick around for the whole meeting?
Yeah, I'll wait, I'll wait for it.
We're gonna. Old business item, we have the organizational chart for the EMTC, is that? That's in the pack too, correct?
Yes, just from the committee, um, we handed out last meeting and asked that everyone take a look and and come back if there are any questions, or hopefully we can move forward with approving it, so that the EMTC can move forward with filling the open positions over there. Any questions?
I got a couple of questions on, uh, phone, uh, cable and the internet. Is there any way we could figure out a cost analysis on how much did department cost to run those three departments per customer?
Sure, we have the costs.
I mean, yeah, with, with the labor cost.
We have the costs, we just gotta.
Not the, not the, um, the tools and stuff, but like, you got four hundred customers, how much is it gonna cost, you know, into the past year plus the following year with this new system, how much more money is it gonna cost for that department? Because if they switch so much to the general fund, and if they take more for the labor, is that gonna take more away from the general fund's budget? And who's gonna pay that difference? That's what I'm looking at. So, I'd need some, like, if there's seven hundred phone customers last year, how many is this year? How many for the cable, how many for the internet? Because there's been a lot of switching with the phone and the internet, uh, lately, and I think the cable's pretty low too, so I'd like to know, how many, uh, customers do we have? I asked Jay the same question, I'm gonna meet with him tomorrow, he's got about twelve hundred, so I wanna break down on how much it costs for the labor.
Well, we can definitely ask Todd or Beth to give us those numbers, but I can tell you though, our, um, in our committee meetings and talking with Todd, I feel that the EMTC is the fastest growing with technology and evolution than any other department we have. I mean, technology, if we don't keep up with it, it's going to get away from us, and then we're gonna have to just get out of the whole thing. Um, there's, it's endless things right now that are coming down, and Todd really wants to be able to explore those, to offer those to our customers too, but.
Yeah, what price, 'cause, uh, every place has a different speed too, for the amount of money.
I'll tell you what price, it's gonna be the price of either we have the company or we don't, because it's gonna be a matter of survival.
I think, I think the taxpayers should, uh, be able to find out how much it costs for per customer, because that's the question they've been asking me lately. Since this stuff's been passed out, is how much does it cost per person?
These new services are, they aren't going to be free, they're going to be something, and that's Todd's focus, is what new products and services can we offer to bring in new revenue? And that's where he's focusing, is he wants to build that revenue for kids, he knows he has this four million dollar buy route the home project coming. I mean, I, we can definitely ask him what the number of customers is per, and then, you know, take and divide that by labor rates and see what it is, but I think, like Steve said, it's either we go forward with this, or we're gonna be looking at being behind the market and then having to sell out one of the.
But the survival is gonna depend on the internet and what we can do with, with upgrading technology, it's not gonna be with cable TV. But cable TV is one of those things with, you know, I guess it's just like having a wart, you gotta hang on to it, you know? If, if you remove it, what? You know, it's, it's a vital part of what we've got right now, and it's a necessary part of what we have. But if we don't maintain the things up above it, the internet, the cameras, the security issues, I, I would like to hear Todd, probably within the last month, how many cameras he's installed, how many security systems he's upgraded, et cetera. That's, that's the kind of things that's, that's helping, especially, uh, with the phone systems that they've upgraded, those kinds of things. Cable TV is, you're not gonna get your answer there, you know, you'd have to combine some things. You'd have to combine some things with cable and phone and everything else, but yeah, it, it's not gonna be cheap, but we're creeping ever closer to that Fiber to the Home project, and without it, without it, it'll, it just won't happen, I mean, the whole project won't.
And didn't Todd say that our consultant said we need to start looking at this sooner than?
We need to start looking at what?
The Fiber to the Home.
Okay, and you said without this, we're not going to get Fiber to the Home, what do you mean without this?
Without keeping pace with some of the things we're doing, I mean, if we just try to hang on to cable, we're not gonna go anywhere, cable is gonna make us in honey.
No, I don't think anybody.
It's the upgrades with the phone systems that they're doing, it's the upgrades with the internet, it's the upgrades with the security.
Right, and I, I guess my question would be is, why are we doing this, I mean, what is this solving?
Right now, there isn't really a set structure over there at the E M T C. And Todd wants to have kind of a guideline on how his department is going to be structured, so he can go forward with knowing exactly what he's hiring, what we need to fill over there. Um, you know, right now, we have the general manager, we have the general manager assistant. We just hired for the utility billing person, we don't have that operations manager, right now, we have three techs, we have telephone tech, an internet tech, and a cable TV tech. And so, I think the biggest change on that is he's looking to potentially move one of them, maybe up into an operations management position. And so then we have still a tech position that needs to be filled.
But back to your question, Troy, it really started with what his plans are. And as we look at the personnel we have in place, where are we at three years down the line? Do we still have them or don't we? And so, that's where this all really started, this thing.
And, and I get that, and I guess this one goes back to the question I asked on the first meeting, or when we started talking about this, is why are we doing this if it's not really broken? If we need to hire another tech, let's hire another tech. But let's not.
I think it's to take advantage of some of the talents and the people we have in place.
And Todd's done a lot of research, he's gone out and, um, contacted other companies, or other telephone companies, internet companies, similar to our size. And all of them have that general manager over the top, that kind of does the regulatory reporting, um, and then they have an operations manager, which is kind of like a lead foreman, or lead tech, so to say, that handles all of the day-to-day operations, oversight, and that general manager. Right now, Todd is the general manager and operations manager. And I think, you know, we, he really, and I agree with him, we need to get that separated. I, like, Todd's just really looking for some guidance, and he doesn't know where to, you know, unless we approve this, or if we kinda go back to what we've already got, which would be just taking out, I think, that operations manager position. Um, and just.
So so if we hire, or if we approve this, then we're gonna be looking at he's an operational manager instead of a technician, or, or what are we actually gonna be looking for then?
Um, I guess.
Well, it would be to run the plan, it'd be a lot similar to what Dean was doing. Dean Jacobson.
Yeah, I get it.
And coordinating all of those particular efforts out of that, that building. It doesn't necessarily take into, into account the regulatory things that are taking place inside.
Right, right, right.
Cause Todd, or Dean was def, was technically that lead position, and when he left, we just replaced him with a tech, we never did a, a lead person, or an intermediary in there.
So you'd, you'd be looking at hiring two people then?
Just one.
But there's one spot open up there, right? So fill in that spot. But then, would you be looking at hiring another tech in the next year or few then, as I was saying?
No, I think Todd's vision of it over there would, is that that person would still do what they're doing, would just take on the responsibilities of the overall operations manager as well. Which is similar to what they're already doing.
Which would take something off of their plate in the office, put it on the plate there.
So the operational manager, I guess reading the description earlier, um, would he have any hands-on work then? He, he would be in the trenches, if you wanna say something like that, or, so there would be?
Undoubtedly.
What's that?
Undoubtedly. I just don't see our system ever growing to that point where somebody sits in their office all the time anymore. I just don't see that.
So just for clarification, Steve. So the operations manager on the chart, is that person likely to be either the cable TV or the internet technician also?
The operations manager?
No.
The operations manager would, yeah, well, it would be either telephone tech, tech, internet tech, or cable TV tech. We wouldn't have those three, which right now, we have those three techs, we'd be going down to two techs plus the
Operations.
Operations manager.
So you would, so that's, I think what Troy was asking, so right now, we have one technician position that's open, right?
No, right now, we have one outside plant, cause Jerry Enson's position is what's still open.
Okay, we have that position?
Yeah, it's the outside plant position.
Where is that on here?
That would be, I think, more or less that combination tech.
Okay, and then if we approved an operations manager, presumably, one of these technicians is gonna get moved up to the operations manager.
No, technically, already, it's.
We need, we need to probably talk about personnel here in a different light here.
Some of this, I'm not, this isn't clear to me, I guess, I'm not sure how this is.
I guess, so you know, we're going to executive for personnel.
Can you second?
Motion made, seconded, to go into executive session for personnel, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
I was ready to see you guys.
I think, you have a word?
No. Since we are on your old business, I would, uh, make a motion that we approve the new organizational chart for E M T C.
Delene, a second.
Motion made by Steve, seconded by Delane to approve the beer service developed on organizational chart, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nope.
One is opposed? Motion carries? Uh, new business, resolution two thousand eighteen dash oh six, uh, annexation for lot two, block nine, Lombard's Edition.
Aye.
Yeah, um, they brought in a plaque that they wanted to have filed, and I told them that we needed to annex the properties first, which is what you're looking at now. To prepare, prepare the resolution of annexation, I changed just a little bit there, um, from the original. There we go. Um, and under, under the parcel description, I just added a partially platted known as Lot Two, Block Nine, Lombard's Edition, as it is not in the city limits as of yet, and, uh, and I'm just gonna attach the parcel map, so that people can see, uh, that'll be with that resolution, so. This is a parcel that, uh, is being added to.
What's the guy's name again?
Gary, Gary Anderson. Has, he brought a lot, a little bit extra there to add a garage onto his new home that he brought in.
Just a carpet? I think it's a carpet.
Yeah, yeah.
Sure, Steve.
So, anyhow, we just wanna bring some, like, more land, and so we'll bring some tax dollars to the city, so, we'd like to annex in the next meeting, then we'll go ahead and work on the platform. Okay, motion, uh, to adopt that resolution.
So you make a motion to adopt resolution two thousand eighteen dash zero six, resolution of annexation for Lot Two, Block Nine, of Lombard's Edition.
Delene, a second.
Motion made by Steve and seconded by Delane to approve resolution two thousand eighteen dash oh six, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ordinance oh five, two thousand eighteen supplemental appropriations ordinance. Uh, we put that together, so that we can go ahead and, uh, pay Burlock for the fees that we are owing.
Yeah.
Question on that, Jerry.
Mm-hmm.
Last meeting, we talked though that we were short a hundred and thirty, some thousand dollars, and I see we're only bringing in less than a thousand.
What we did on the swimming pool donations, is there, is the rest gonna be coming in this year, is that what we understood, as long as it comes in this year? We can pay that back, basically.
The twenty.
Have, has, have the people that?
The pledge, twenty-five thousand.
Yeah.
Um, it'll be some this year and some next year. It's a free, free-year pledge, I believe. Seventeen, eighteen to nineteen. I just.
This is, this is the first reading, so we'll, we can adjust that, but if, do you think we're gonna be fifteen thousand short then, is that what you're saying?
Well, I just, last meeting, we said we were gonna be a hundred and thirty-five thousand, and that was including the liquor store, the swimming pool donations, a hundred and thirty-five, which we still have in the bank. Um, and then the telephone interest, and the overall expenses, everything was showing a hundred and thirty-four thousand shortfall, but now we're only bringing in undes, or unassigned fund balance of nine hundred and seventy-four thousand. So I'm confused on why, or is there just unpaid bills for the contractors that, on why the total expenses were higher than?
I've got a question on the interest on the CD for the telephone. I, I didn't know it were, cause this is for the engineering.
Yeah, we, we have not paid any to him, yeah, that was his, his choice.
Well, I guess, I thought, when that motion was made to transfer that CD interest, I thought it was to pay for incidentals, like, chairs and umbrellas and maybe things like that. I, I, I guess that's what I was thinking that we had, I, I'm not saying that.
Out of, out of the other funds that we had.
So we had enough funds?
Yeah, we're either taking them out of some of his funds from last year that he had budgeted, or else, uh, I don't know if we played anything out of the, actually, bond funds that we had received or not. No, he only says no.
No.
Okay, so.
I just.
One shape, weight shape, or form, it all comes out of kind of a, it's not really. We're just, we just wanna move the funds before we actually pay the bill, we wanna, we've got the motion, or do the first reading, so we can actually go and pay Burlock, cause he just sent this in. Towards the middle of July, so we'd like to get it paid off, we can, as we're trying to figure out how much money's out there, so. I mean, if we have to take some swimming pool donations and back it down to a hundred and twenty thousand, if that's all we got, we can sure do that. We can take some unassigned fun, unassigned fund balances, basically, how many do you have left over from any previous years where you didn't spend your entire general fund budget? We could take the funds from that and add it to that and increase to nine hundred and seventy-four dollars to, um, fifteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars and twenty-three cents, we could do that. And this is just paying for this portion of it right now, if we have to do another amendment at the end of the year, Theresa, we will do so. Because we still, we still may have some additional bills from Burlock coming in, yeah. But we, we're, what we're trying to get here is just to pay Burlock right now, that's our main focus, is just trying to pay Burlock what is owed to him.
Right.
We don't have any money right now, we can pay him with.
Yeah.
We've got money, but we need to move it around and show where we're getting the money from.
Sure, so yeah, we have a hundred and twenty thousand in the bank that I can give you for the swimming pool. Um, and then the, the rest is still out of pledge.
Okay, so we'll change that to swimming pool donations to a hundred and twenty, and increase the unassigned fund balance to fifteen thousand, nine seventy-four, twenty-three, which would still leave us, uh, what Burlock is asking to be paid.
So are we still waiting to pay the rest of the?
No, we've paid everyone else now.
Cause I, I guess I'm just looking back on the sheet we had from last meeting, we had our total source of funds was two point nine million, and our total expenses was over three million, so we were a hundred and forty-four thousand, now at ten thousand for the swimming pool, or the fundraiser. So we were a hundred and thirty-four thousand, and that's why I'm confused, I'm, it's fine that, it's great that we're only having to mow van ten, fifteen thousand from undesignated or unassigned funds, but I'm, my mind's just not understanding why if, when sources of funds compared to the total expenses was a hundred and thirty-four thousand short, why we're only needing now fifteen thousand, that's to me, that's, you know, a hundred and twenty thousand dollar difference.
One thing, those, those other bills have already been paid, and I'm assuming, you know, we don't have any others at this point in time are paid. So if we need to do an adjustment here towards the end, we can do one more adjustment for the year, and as we close out that total fund. That's what I would suggest doing anyhow at this point in time, like, so we're just trying to get Burlock paid at this point in time. And, uh, we will do another look and see where we're at, and if we have to do another supplement, we'll do it. We've been trying to keep on top of these supplements, but sometime, I mean, if we, we've been trying to get these done beforehand, I don't know, within times passes, we'd always do the supplements at the end of the year.
Mm.
Which isn't the correct way to do it, so, we're trying to keep ahead of them, so.
I just think we're gonna have to come up with a hundred and thirty-five thousand, five thousand, so.
So we have to adjust this before we can?
This is the first reading.
Okay.
Of the ordinance, so it's just a first reading, and so we'll make those changes and have the second reading adopted at the next meeting.
Aye, thank you.
So there's no motion or any other either.
Yeah. Now, the next item, is it different than this authorized payment to Burlock?
Yeah, I told you to get the motion off, pay him, it's, it's just such a large amount, but it's the four hundred and thirty thousand eight seventy-six fourteen. We, we've done the first reading, typically, we'd wait, but Burlock would like to get paid, so. And it's not his fault, we don't have him looked around, or knew what we had all available. So we would just like to have a motion to pay that.
Is that a motion to pay?
Can we move to pay authorized payment to Burlock Aquatics for professional services of the amount four hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars and forty-one cents?
Ten seconds. Motion's made, and sec, made by Delane, seconded by Shaw to authorize payment to Burlock Aquatics of four hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars and forty-one cents, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Change order number one, hybrid turkey sewer and water maintenance extension project.
Okay, with the patent down, we did a final walkthrough on everything out there, and, um, what you're seeing is a total reduction in contract price of three thousand thirty-three dollars and eight cents, bringing the contract down to three oh six, nine oh two twenty. Um, that's just based on some final quantities that they, they put together for us after the project was complete, so. We just need to have a motion authorize the, the, the change order there, on that project.
Shaw make a motion for order number one for hybrid turkey sewer and water main extension project, as jury signed the statement.
Can you second?
Motion made by Shaw, seconded by Kane to approve change order number one for the hybrid turkey sewer and water main extension project, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, pay request number four for hybrid turkey sewer and water main extension project.
Yeah, this is the final for thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and ten dollars and twenty-two cents. And, uh, just may have authorized the agent to pay that.
Shaw make a motion, pay request number four, final for hybrid turkey sewer and water main extension for thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and ten dollars and twenty-two cents, as jury signed the statement.
Delene, a second.
Motion made by Shaw, seconded by Delane to authorize pay request number four, in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and ten dollars and twenty-two cents, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Just one comment, now, those funds are all being taken care of through, uh, a tip and a grant, so there's no city funds being extended here, so. Why they just gotta run everything through the city, because that's where the grant dollars were put.
Uh, next item is, uh, declaration surplus property for sale in the city of Sioux Falls, two thousand eighteen auction.
First ones you have there, I think, in your pack, were just, uh, some things that Mike has had, that have been taking up a room, I think, when, uh, when, uh, they originally built the building, there was a number of items that they felt they were gonna need, these are, are items that they've really never taken out to use, so, we'd like to get rid of those. Uh, they're taking valuable space out there, and then Jeff had the list of items that you, uh, I guess I'll let you guys read that, if you have any questions about any of those, two, three, four. About ten items, you can ask Jeff on any of those, but we would be taking all these up to Sioux Falls, uh, they have a very large auction up there on a Saturday, and typically, they get a little bit of money, and what we could try to do is try to sell each and every one of those things individually. If you guys are okay with that, we will, uh, just bounce, we will, we will make a motion to approve selling those at auction.
Shaw make a motion to clear surplus property for sale at the city of Sioux Falls, two thousand eighteen auction, as jury signed the statement.
Can you second?
Motion made by Shaw, seconded by Kane to approve, uh, surplus property, uh, to sell at Sioux Falls, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, beer for community bus subsidy drawdown request?
Yes, I, I just wanna make one comment there that, uh, Harold told us there. If you were reading, look at designated for the new van, there's a donation of ten thousand dollars that came out of there. Uh, that's why their, their cash, any cash balance looks quite a bit higher than what it would be. You take the ten thousand dollars out on November, or September thirtieth, they'll have a cash balance of one thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three dollars, so. She just wanted to make sure you guys were aware, that's a, a one-time donation in there, so. We'd just like to have a motion to authorize the payment of that drawdown request.
Shaw make a motion for beer for community bus subsidy drawdown request, as jury signed the statement.
Sorry, a second.
Motion made by Shaw, seconded by Sabegon to approve the community bus subsidy drawdown request, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next in the council meeting, moving the date to September fourth due to the Labor Day holiday on Monday the third. Maybe a motion for that?
No, not the matter.
It isn't here. And then it'll be posted, and, um, and you have an executive session for proprietary reasons, there's a motion?
Do we have to pay the bills?
I'm sorry, oh, pay the bills, sorry. Do I have a motion to pay the bills?
Delene, second.
Delene?
Will.
Second by Boone. To, to pay the bills, all in favor, say aye? Opposed? Motion carries. I'm sorry. And now, proprietary executive session, if there's a motion.
Delene moves to go into executive session for proprietary.
Boone, ten.
Motion made by Boone, seconded by Boone, turn to an executive session, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Three thirty-two.